Did he die because of the wreck or did he just already die? Was there another car involved at all? But you don't think it was the car wreck that caused it?
I think it's the freeway stop sign, freeway stop there.
And the freeway stop would have helped him? Where did he live? He had just left and was heading out. Yeah, yeah. Oh, really? Oh, okay. This one's the name, right?
I guess somebody we do with over DVD. But I just wanted to come off and I could use my. I'm not even sure. I think we're in the fifth, we just call it Mike.
And I was the one who told her to relax.
Mercier.
Yeah, Mercier, some first couple of months long. Some first couple of months long. We do some stuff here sometimes. We do a lot of things. I have much of a bank account to use it for. In fact, somebody did a good time where they knew you had lots of gifts. No, no, it was somebody present, like new joke. Present, yeah. They seemed like nice guys.
Yeah, I think they were there.
You didn't know who knew you? Okay. I gotta, I gotta work on it.
Oh, really? I was in New York, so I didn't know. Sorry about that.
I am ready when you are.
Okay, welcome to the November first two thousand and ten special called Work Session. Work Sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on Work Session items. Tonight, there are four items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. Will city clerk please say on the agenda?
Our first item is going to be proclamation recognizing homeless awareness month.
Actually, I think we'll just go with the agenda.
Presentation of state certification award to the City of Milton Police Department, presented by Michael Caldwell, Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police.
Good evening or good afternoon, mayor and city council members of the City of Milton. I'm Mike Caldwell and I'm general counsel, the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. I'm here, the pleasure of presenting to the police department of the City of Milton their certification for, by the, the state certification committee. Certification is a progressive and time proven way of helping law enforcement agencies review and improve their overall performances. The foundation of certification lies in the development of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. After the policies and procedures are in place, a team of trained assessors verifies that applicable standards have been successfully implemented by the police department. The process culminates when the joint review committee determines that the agency has met the requirements for certification. Certification status represents a significant professional achievement by a law enforcement agency. The benefits of certification include confirmation that the agency practices are consistent with progressive professional standards, greater operational and administrative effectiveness, enhanced understanding of agency policies and practices, greater public confidence in the agency, recognition in the field of outstanding achievement, and here's one you'll like, reduced liability potential, greater governmental and community support. The certification program really came to the fore starting in nineteen ninety six when the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police assigned a committee along with key members from the Georgia Police Accreditation Coalition, the G-PAC that's called, to review and further develop a process to the point where it became a viable working program. The agency certification program identifies standards that are felt to be essential to the efficient and effective operation of a law enforcement agency. To achieve state certification, the Milton Police Department had to meet one hundred eighteen standards covering eight areas essential to effective law enforcement. These standards provide a blueprint for professional law enforcement. They incorporate contemporary professional thought and practices in Georgia relative to law enforcement. These high standards ensure meeting the goal of increasing the effectiveness and efficiency of Georgia law enforcement agencies. The process of certification has six steps. The steps include the application, the policy development and compliance assessment, joint committee review, the awards ceremony. Only step six remains, and that is the ongoing compliance monitoring that will start after tonight. It is my pleasure to, to present Chief Deborah J. Harrell with this plaque recognizing this important achievement, if I can get it off podium here. I hate problems. This is the plaque that is, let me hand this to you, Chief Harrell. There, now you can struggle with it. I will also be asking that the chief accept GACP's small token of appreciation for having served as the agency's certification manager. I would be remiss if I did not also thank each member of the Milton Police Department for their commitment to law enforcement excellence and to this council itself and the citizens for the support of the Milton Police Department as they underwent this process. All of the men and women sworn and unsworn of the Milton Police Department are to be congratulated for the achievement of certification. So, chief, this is for you personally to recognize your part in this. You, you should all give yourselves a big hand. Your department is going a long way towards professional law enforcement standards and towards protecting the citizens of the City of Milton from crime, not only from crime, but from liability that often comes from their crime fighting efforts. So, y'all are a lot safer because of this process. You're to be congratulated for it.
Thank you. And who in mind, I'd like to, and just second ask the council to step forward and maybe Michael too, we could get a picture, but I do want to say how proud we are of Chief Harrell and all our public safety personnel. I've always said that's a job that I admire. I admire the people that do that job because they put their life on the line every day for not only us, but people they don't know, so keeping our citizens safe, so.
And Matt.
And Matt. Okay, and, well, all, and everybody. It's a team effort, but I want to thank everybody and all the way down from our city manager. So, congratulations and I'd like to ask the council to come forward and we can get a picture. Will city clerk please say on the next item?
Next item is proclamation recognizing homeless awareness month. This is presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, homelessness is not just an urban problem. It affects us here in North Fulton. In an effort to rescue children, individuals and families from homelessness, local social services and housing agencies are partnering together to help return those individuals to a safe, stable and permanent housing. We here in Milton are proud to have in our audience representatives from five agencies who are working together to provide service for the community. Dr. Erin Fortney, executive director of Find a Way Home, Ms. Betty Lewis May, North Fulton area director with Habitat for Humanity, North Central Georgia, Ms. Barbara Duffy from North Fulton Community Charities, Mr. John Smith with the Drake House, and Ms. Rose Burton from Homestretch. So, after, I'm going to read this proclamation first, then I'm going to ask Dr. Erin Fortney to say a few words to us. Whereas, every year during the month of November, agencies throughout this country emphasize education and awareness of the children and families in our communities who are homeless. Whereas, homeless awareness month serves to focus and heighten attention on the existence, on the existence and the needs of homeless children, individuals and families. And whereas, the most recent homeless census count documented one hundred and sixty-nine homeless individuals and families in the North Fulton County area living in shelters. And more than five hundred families in North Fulton sought transitional housing assistance this year alone. And whereas, there are hundreds more children, individuals and families who are the hidden homeless, undocumented and living in overcrowded dwellings, hotels, cars and other places not suitable for shelter. And whereas, in an effort to rescue children, individuals and families from homelessness, local social services and housing agencies such as Homestretch, Housing Initiative of North Fulton, the Drake House, Habitat for Humanity, North Central Georgia, North Fulton Community Charities, and Find a Way Home partner together with local churches, churches and faith-based community, community-based education agencies to help return these individuals to a safe, stable and permanent housing. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the council hereby recognize and proclaim the month of November two thousand and ten as homeless awareness month in the City of Milton, given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the first day of November two thousand and ten. So, I would like to invite Dr. Erin Fortney up to say a few words.
All that education and I still can't work a microphone. Thank you, Mayor Lockwood and council. I want to offer our sincere appreciation on behalf of all five of our organizations. Together, we provide a continuum of care for those families in the North Fulton community who are homeless or in danger of becoming homeless. I'd like to share a little bit about each of our organizations with you. The goal of North Fulton Community Charities is to provide emergency assistance to keep people in their homes during short-term emergencies so that their crisis situation does not escalate into homelessness. They provide small amounts of assistance for over five thousand local families each year. When their support is not, when North Fulton Community Charity's support is not enough and a family does get evicted or become homeless, we hope, they hope that there will be space at one of the partners in the continuum to pick up that family and work with them over time to return them to independence and self-sufficiency. The Drake House provides emergency residential housing for homeless women and children along with a comprehensive program of education and services to assist their return to stabilized housing. Homestretch guides homeless working families with minor children in the North Metro Atlanta community towards increased self-reliance and stability by providing life skills training, mentoring and supportive housing. Habitat for Humanity, North Central Georgia is a Christian housing ministry with the purpose of building and refurbishing homes with partner families, and those homes are sold at no profit and no interest to families who could not otherwise afford to own a home. This year Habitat, North Central Georgia is celebrating their fifteen-year anniversary, and they recently dedicated their two-hundredth home. They're able to accomplish these milestones through private donations, grants, and the utilization of tremendous amounts of volunteer labor from the community. And finally, at Find a Way Home, we believe that everyone has a right to live in the community that they serve. By providing affordable housing, financial literacy and education and a dedicated mentor, we help these hardworking families learn to budget and live within their means, pay down their debt, improve their credit, establish savings, and ultimately transition into homeownership or into affordable market rate rent. As a continuum, we are so proud to partner together to combat homelessness in North Fulton, not just during November, but all year round. We are also tireless advocates for the creation and preservation of safe, decent and affordable housing in the community. We work hard to provide a continuum of care for those in need. However, despite all of our collective efforts, there are still gaps in that continuum and many needs that go unaddressed. Those gaps occur at two points. First, when single adults or intact families become homeless. And second, when there's not enough capacity for the number of families in need. Again, we are humbled by this honor and we thank you for taking this important step towards raising awareness of this need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and before I hand out these proclamations, I just want to thank all these organizations. I know personally, in the last, last few years probably for most all of us, either we've all been hit with, with trying times or know someone that needs help and it's nice to know that there are people out there working hard to, to help those in need. And I think we've all have got kind of a recheck in our mind that, you know, it's, it's not just someone else that's homeless or needs help, that we're all just a little bit away from that. So, it's, it's nice to know that people care and volunteer and, and the hard work that you guys do. So, I'm going to step down and pass these out if you, representatives would step forward and then if the council would like to come down. Okay, if our city clerk will please say on the next agenda.
Proclamation honoring J.C. French and his heroic lifesaving effort, presented by council member Bill Lusk and the Sons of the American Revolution.
Seems that one can't pick up a newspaper recently or, or turn on TV or TV or radio without hearing some sad or bad tale. I think good stories are fewer far between these days. The previous two proclamations are, are good stories and we're glad to hear them. Tell you about another good story and I think everybody needs to be aware of it. There's an article written in the Destin Daily News on September eighth of this year regarding a Milton citizen, and I'll read you excerpts from this article. It's about a resident from Milton by the name of J.C. French. And J.C. was on vacation with his family and friends at Sand Destin Golf and Beach Resort when he and his mom Lisa kayaked out to Sand Bar in the Gulf to hunt for sand dollars. They were about to head back to shore about three P.M. when J.C. said he could hear someone. Lisa, his mom, was in the water holding on to the kayak. She said the kayak blocked her view of the man struggling in the water nearby. She didn't hear anything, but J.C. did. "I heard him say, 'Help,' J.C. said. The man was about fifty feet away." His mom told J.C. to throw the man her life jacket, which she had left in the kayak. J.C. stood up in the kayak, aimed and threw the life jacket right to the man. "It was like Danan, it was just crazy," his mom said. Lisa then pushed the kayak to the man. She said he was in deep water, far from the shallow area where she, where she and J.C. were looking for shells. They reached the man clinging to the life jacket and had him grab the side of the kayak. "He grabbed on for dear life," she said. They brought him to shore with the help of another kayaker. He kept saying, "Thank you so much, a couple more seconds and I wouldn't have made it." Lisa and her husband knew J.C. had a good arm. He was an outfielder and catcher for his all-star baseball team. In fact, the team's state championship win was part of the reason the French family, together with J.C.'s teammate Jake Peacock, and his family vacationed at Sand Destin. I'd like to invite J.C. and his family to come forward and I'll read this proclamation. I might add that J.C. is six years old. It's a proclamation honoring J.C. French and his heroic lifesaving effort. Whereas, on Saturday, September fourth, two thousand and ten, six-year-old J.C. French was on vacation with his family and friends at Sand Destin Golf and Beach Resort in Sand Destin, Florida, celebrating state baseball championship. And whereas, J.C. and his mother were searching for sand dollars and when they heard a man calling for help from fifty feet away in deep water. And whereas, J.C. and his mother were searching for sand dollars when, I repeat myself, calling for help from fifty feet away in deep water. Whereas miraculously, J.C. threw a life jacket directly to the man, allowing time for his mother to push the family's kayak to the stranded swimmer. And whereas, without J.C.'s quick thinking, the stranded swimmer would almost certainly have drowned. And whereas, throughout the ordeal, J.C. remained calm and collected, which assured a safe rescue. And whereas, on top of everything else, J.C. gave the swimmer one of only two sand dollars he had collected that day, telling him to keep it for life. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, the City of Milton, hereby dedicate Monday, November third, first, two thousand and ten as J.C. French Day in the City of Milton, Georgia, giving, given under our hand and seal, the City of Milton, Georgia, on this first day of November, two thousand and ten. At this time, I'd like to invite Oliver Gard from Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, to come forward and make their presentation.
It's my honor as president of the Piedmont Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution to also recognize the heroic efforts and the service to his fellow citizens and to recognize J.C. French with this award, which we appropriately title the Bronze Good Citizenship Medal Award. And with it, there's also a bronze Good Citizenship Medal that he may wear at his discretion. And remember, we are so glad that he has been one of the youngest, probably the youngest that has ever received this award from the National Society of the Sons of the American Revolution. And we're proud to do that today for him. So, this is your medal.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two.
And congratulations and thank you, J.C., for your heroic actions and your parents and your family. They've got to be so proud of you. And thank Councilmember Lusk for presenting this. Make Milton proud.[853.69][853.69](laughter)
Will the city clerk please say on the next agenda item?
Our next agenda item is presentation of the City of Milton's draft, Comprehensive Plan. This is presented by Michelle McIntosh-Ross, City Planner, and George Ragsdale, Chair, CPAC.
Actually, I'll take this. I'll go ahead and take this and simply to introduce you to our first final draft because I understand there could probably be more, but this is our first final draft and we hope to see comments on. George Ragsdale, who's been the diligent chairman of our committee for quite some time now, has been working hard on this as well and will present to you the contents of this document.
It's always easier just to put this thing up. Okay, good evening. First, there are five of us here tonight and I first want to acknowledge the five that are here. I'm not going to ask them to stand, but please raise your hands. Those that are members of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. There are more than those that are here that have been equally diligent through this whole process, but there's a core of about eight to 10 people that have been here week after week working on this and I think that they deserve that recognition, as does Michelle and Lynn. What you have in front of you, excuse me, what you have in front of you is a draft of the agenda, which is the final piece, the final piece of the Comprehensive Plan. What I'd like to do is just walk through the contents. What I'd like to do is just walk through the -- Julie, I've got some right here. Yeah, thanks. Just walk through the contents to give you a sense of what's here. The most critical pieces of this are going to be the schedule in order to get this done by the end of the year and the need to get your comments back. This document was actually distributed to the committee for the first time earlier this week, excuse me, last week. And so you're seeing it basically at the same time we are. We wanted to get a draft in front of you before it's introduced at the public hearing that's scheduled for the 15th of November so that you would be able to have some additional time to be able to take a look at it. Again, the contents of the plan are pretty much dictated by the state, but what we have done is tried to organize it in a way that we think makes sense for the city. The executive summary covers the mission statement for the city, an overview of the process, which as all of you know has been going on for quite some time, but goes into the participation plan as well as the other parts of the plan that have been presented before. It talks about the overall planning goals and objectives for the city. And then we get into the real meat of the plan. We talk about the issues and the opportunities we see for the city in eight different areas, which are delineated here. They're not listed here in any particular order or priority. We'll deal with that a little bit more when we get into the short-term work plan later on in the document. But each of those eight areas is covered in some detail. We then talk about the future development map, which is really intended to illustrate the policies for the city. It defines those areas of the city that require special attention. Could be environmental areas, areas where we want to make sure that we are putting in place some policies to make sure that the aesthetics that we have today are protected going forward. It identifies the facilities, both community and equestrian, churches, natural features and things like that, so that you have a view of what the city looks like and how it will be developed in the future. A lot of time spent over the last year or so talking about character areas. We talk about each one individually. We have a character area map that defines what each of those eight character areas is, the boundaries that we've laid out and what we think the distinctive features of those character areas are, both now and in the future. And then we have a future land use map, which defines the land use patterns for the city and represents the policies for the city all the way down to a parcel level. Now, it's not a zoning map, it's a land use map. And the distinction is important because while the land use map will provide guidance for zoning decisions, it is not dispositive with respect to specific zoning requests. We then talk about the policies, which are really recommendations from the community to guide your actions. And obviously, neither the Comprehensive Plan community nor the citizens can set policy. That's your job, but this section of the document is trying to provide some guidance in areas where we think policies are going to be helpful in trying to preserve the environment that we want going forward. We then talk about implementation measures. They're identified for each character area, both short-term and long-term. A lot of the short-term objectives, a lot of the short-term work plan has already been addressed, but some of the budget activities, excuse me, some of the activities that you have budgeted and planned for this year, some of the things the Planning Commission has already included in their plans for this year. But this document's a little bit more comprehensive. We tried to look out five years to those things that really need to be done. As you might expect, particularly with a new city, there's an awful lot of things that we would like to try and accomplish in the next five years, but we've tried to be somewhat discretionary and realistic about what can be accomplished and separated those into long and short term. We have a report of accomplishments. By direction of the state, those accomplishments are, at this point, intended to describe what has taken place since the approval of the partial plan earlier this year. A lot's been accomplished clearly since the city was incorporated back in 2006, but when we submitted the partial plan earlier this year, that kind of established a benchmark. So as we talk about accomplishments in this document, it will be those accomplishments since the introduction of that partial plan. When this plan's updated five years from now, the reference point will be this document to the new five-year plan. And then we've included in the appendix a number of supplemental plans for the city, the Crab Apple Plan, Birmingham, Rural Preservation, Traffic, and the Trails Plan as reference documents, rather than trying to restate or recite sections of those documents in the Comprehensive Plan. So that covers the text, the meat. All of that is in front of you. The one piece that is not in front of you is the financial model. If I can take you back to earlier this year, the direction that our committee received from the council was to complete the Comprehensive Plan and then construct a financial model based on that plan. That's what we're doing. We have not finished the financial model. We will be finishing it over the next week or so and expect to be in a position to present that on the 15th at the public hearing. From a schedule standpoint, really only three key dates that we want to keep in front of you. One is the public hearing scheduled for the 15th, when we would present the financial model and present this plan, this draft plan, to the public. November 24th is the date by which we would like to have comments back from any of you. That gives you about three weeks to take a look at it and three weeks to give us comments. The 24th, if you, without looking at your calendars, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that allows you guys not to have to worry about it over the holidays and allows us some time to work on it, with the intent that we would come back to you on the 20th of December and ask for approval to forward it on to the state. Remember that what that means on the 20th of December is we're not asking you to adopt the plan. What we're doing is asking for your approval to forward on to the state. There's likely to be feedback from the state. There's likely to be some work that would have to be done after that. Hopefully, it will be minor in nature, but what we'll be seeking on the 20th is only your approval to forward it on to the state. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, George, and thank you to the committee. Obviously, a tremendous amount of work has gone into it. When I hear you mention that there will be on the 15th a discussion with a financial model, I guess my question, just to CPAC and then maybe our city manager, is that given that we don't have any of that information tonight, is there going to be an opportunity for us to discuss that as it relates to this and what's being proposed, other than at that November 15th? In other words, are we going to have a work session or we have that dialogue? Only because at this point, we don't have that information to review.
The schedule did not anticipate an additional work session. However, again, you'll have until the 24th to make comments. The committee's been very diligent about meeting, discussing those comments. We do have additional meetings scheduled specifically to go over the comments we received from the council and to incorporate those as we need to.
And I guess my question, just that the financial model, if we don't get that till the 15th, we then just have that period to review or provide comment? And perhaps we don't want, we need to make any comments. I'm just wondering about that timetable.
That's correct. It is pretty tight, I'll have to admit. But again, as George had mentioned earlier, the approval that we're seeking on the 20th of December is not an approval of the entirety of the plan, but allow us to get us to the state so that we can get any additional comments. We can still continue to tweak as necessary.
The only other comment I would make, and I don't want to prejudge how the model is going to turn out, because we're not finished with it yet, but again, I would remind you that the direction that we were asked to take last time was to present a model to you that we anticipated would have a shortfall in funding, that we would not have revenue exceeding expenses. Whether that turns out to be the case or not, we haven't finished it. But assuming that's the case, to your point, it's our expectation that the work needed to close that gap is something that council took on for themselves along with staff and that the CPAC committee per se would not be involved in that going forward. Obviously, if you want us to do something more or if you need some of our help, we'll be happy to do that, but that's our understanding of the path that we wanted to take.
And if I can just recap to make sure I understand, based on the conversations we had had, obviously, quite a while ago, and it was my understanding that the financial model no longer was going to be the driver for the land use policy, but the surveys, the citizens, and the CPAC committee were going to come up with their recommendations and that we didn't want how we would finance the future of our area to really drive what the land use should be.
Correct, and that's why what's in front of you does not have a financial model. What's in front of you is trying to respond to that and this plan has ignored whatever the financial impacts of what we are recommending would be until we finish the plan. The financial model will be, if you will, a response to that plan and a look at, based on the land use that's in the plan, what will that mean with respect to the finance for the city.
So this plan is the recommendation of CPAC?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. But will this plan be altered at all if there are, depending on what the financial model says, or is it going to go?
Not by our committee. As far as we're concerned, this is our recommendation. Again, based on our understanding of the direction, whatever is needed to find the funding sources to close whatever gaps there were or are would be something that the council would take on with staff.
Okay. I guess that concerns me a little bit because until we understand the financial implications of a plan going forward 15 to 20 years, I mean, it's hard for me to go forward with the plan if the plan is doomed to fail because of the financial implications. But I guess we'll know better come 15th of November.
Understand. Remember that at least as far as the state's concerned, the financial model is not something that has to be submitted to the state. The financial model is something that we wanted to do because we thought it was an important thing for the city to look at. And so to Lynn's point, they could be disconnected to the extent that the plan can go forward, you know, and be submitted while we're still working on whatever you want to do with the financial model.
Chris, maybe you could speak to that briefly, because I know that this goes back, obviously, months ago, and I think that the direction, obviously, from the city manager's office, was that the land use planning for the City of Milton should not be dictated, if you will, by a model. And so do you want to speak to that?
Let me jump in too. I think the intent here is to basically take what the committee recommends and with input from our citizens and whatnot, to come up with the ultimate plan that collectively we feel is, you know, the future plan of Milton and the financial plan is secondary that we may have to, you know, we have, this gives us a plan to work towards, but it's not geared totally in step-by-step with the financial plan. Is that what your point is too, Julie?
I mean, hopefully, the financial model will say that this plan works great and we don't have to do anything else to it, so.
And maybe to restate that is that I think there are two separate activities. One is a land use planning process, which is driven by citizen input and by the CPAC committee over the last few years, along with our professional staff, in terms of what the future of Milton from a land use perspective should and will be, based on all of those entities, of course, with the input of council. But that the financial model, as I understand it, is a separate and distinct activity that because this is the recommendation from CPAC and from citizens, that how we arrive at maintaining green space in certain areas or how we arrive at completing commercial activity in a particular area, that that might come from bond issuances and/or other creative financial approaches, but that the land use should not be driven by a financial model which is uncertain. And Chris, again, I'm going to ask you if you could speak to that, because I think it's important that we ensure where we are.
I can. And I think I can be real brief, actually, in saying, yes, this is kind of a two-step thing.
At this point, I'm going to adjourn this work session, and we will move on into our regular scheduled meeting. I'd like to call the regular meeting...